Yeah, I am just about to step out, make sure it works, and make sure ideas go in, but the union is working this side.
You have a zoom.
I do.
Yeah, so you can hear Jason on there.
Uh, yes.
Are you with us, Jason?
One, Blake, can you unmute my mic?
I can't believe you are present.
It says, it says, Jason said it won't.
New. There we go, okay.
Hi, Jason.
Good evening.
There you go.
There we go, okay.
All right, guys, first thing on the agenda is the approval of agenda, any motions?
Make motion to approve the agendas to justice.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, jump right into discussion items, first on the list is levy results. Okay, so, um, we initially planned this meeting expecting the, uh, basically that the, the vote wouldn't come out in our favor. Right now, the vote looks to be in our favor. And it'll be certified this Friday. And so, be that as it is, we'd initially planned on, when we were seeing those, uh, no votes come in, we'd initially planned off Wednesday, um, and really it not being, be, us not being able to make up the difference. So I, we can talk about this a little bit later, but we tentatively planned for this Wednesday. Um, since the, the votes aren't certified until Friday, I'm gonna recommend moving that meeting to Monday, so we're working with kind of a concrete position. Um, so we'll know at that point, yes or no. If it did or didn't pass, and we can talk about those options as we walk through the meeting tonight, about what, you know, what each situation kind of looks like. But that's, that's it for levy results. I was delighted, um, as were, I'm sure, all of you, um, when we saw those results come back. I, I'm pleased, um, even though it's not by a huge margin. I'm, I'm happy because our, it means our system won't have to go through. And our kids won't.
The opposition moving, uh, will be this Wednesday's meeting to next Monday instead.
Jason?
No, that sounds good.
Cool, thank you.
Is there a way to turn off? This iPad, the sound on the side panel for getting Jason on that way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can turn down at the top.
It's all muted.
Right, so the next one. See, detail budget reduction. So we talked about this being kind of a working draft. We had the opportunity to meet with a couple, a couple different board members last week. Kind of work through their budgetary priorities. But of course, when, so when we're talking about the levy failing, um, there aren't a lot of, I guess there aren't a lot of changes we can make. It's gonna be drastic and it's, it'll hit every department. We can help buffer some of that, but it's, it's basically swapping, so if we don't take it out of one budget, we'll take it out of another. So that's if the levy doesn't pass, if the levy does pass, we actually have a number of different options we'd like to work through with the board. So, this conversation, the hope is that it can be twofold. The first one is to kind of talk about some budgetary priorities and what programs we want to see. And where we don't want those cuts to come out of, out of, or where we do want those cuts to come out of. But the second piece is talking about if it does pass and, uh, options we have within that. So, if it does pass, we can actually protect a lot of personnel, uh, within this, it means that we'll have to delay some of our work. But, you know, people are having their jobs and we won't have to cut as deeply into the, into personnel. So, uh, I guess Craig, do you wanna help us work through that?
And now, should we go on this one that's on the screen? On your screens? Or this handout, there's a little, little differences.
Yeah, whichever one you want.
But we go through the, so let me just, first of all, say that I did, Thursday, look at, if the levy does pass, then our levy, rev, uh, rev, revenue plus from the state is gonna be at about three hundred thousand. So that's the good news. Bad news is that we're still projecting fifty-three, um, at least right now, enrollment drop. And it could be worse than that. Passed, done, what I project, and then we've taken one percent out of that, just to kind of be safe, but, there's some things going on in community that may take some of our enrollment away.
They're different educational providers.
So, you know, the, the, three hundred thousand and that, uh, fifty, uh, students, I'm just gonna say for, for our purposes is, is the wash, so we're still looking at, um, the budget shortfall for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year was, what's this mean? And there are some raises next year, um, that the state's giving, that if we have more staff than what the state's funding formulas show, then either levy or fund balance or reductions needs to accommodate that. So, the, the first column is, as we talked about before, what the total shortfall is, it's not funded, um, by the state. That's six point seven, six point eight million dollars. But then when we start looking at the, another, the next column, proposed reductions, personal program offerings, that's if the levy does not pass. So we were looking at, um, you know, about four point eight billion, four point nine million worth of reductions. So, we can go one by one of those if you want. And then Matt and Deanna can, can chime in. Let me just finish the, the next column here is budget reductions if the levy does pass. So you see that there's some differences obviously between the two. If it does pass, we, we are shooting for about like one point eight million as opposed to the four point eight. So, from the left-hand side, we have all these different categories, superintendent, again, the, the six thousand four ninety-nine is what is really not funded by the state, and yet there's some things that, uh, in the superintendent's budget that we wanted to maybe reduce. So, that, that's, uh, even though the numbers aren't gonna be the same in all three columns, but that, that's the purpose for that. So, we could, there's consultants, I'm not sure what SIP, what SIP stands for. Improvement plans, uh, tools, there's also pivot, which is, um,
The values of software.
So, seventy-five thousand versus thirty-five thousand if that's coming. Consultants, uh, so we have Deanna's office.
Craig, can, can we back up just a little bit?
Yep.
So, the, the column to the very right, the last column, that's budget reductions if the levy passes, so these are the, the reductions that we may need to be considering just to make up for the, the, the reduction in our student enrollment numbers, okay?
And to get to a balanced budget.
And to balance the budget, okay, so that's what we're looking at tonight.
And like, like Ed said, there, so there are options in that.
Right.
If it does pass, just like we were saying, we could, we could zero out mine, and so, that thirty-five could, could show seventy-five, which we'll talk about wiggle room and different options and how we configure that to get to a balanced budget. But we have fewer options of doing that if it does not pass.
Okay.
And so, um, basically, it's kind of a shell game where we're shifting around dollars, but, a cut to one area will be, or not cutting to one area will be.
So we're looking at both?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so looking at, if, if it doesn't pass, we're looking at the one column, but if it does pass, in order to balance the budget, we're looking at the very last column, so there's some good.
All right, so I'm coming up with the one point eight, if the student does pass, one point six budget plus, you know, a couple hundred thousand.
And that's to balance the budget, to take into consideration fewer students that we are projecting, like for the additional school that is probably starting up in the community and those, those types of things, the lower, and more, all right, I got it, thank you.
Um, so, I guess I can go line by line, would that be the board's direction? For consultants, then we have district office staff. The other thing I need to say is that the numbers where it says like one point oh, and for example, teachers six point oh, that's meant to be if the levy fails, and you'll see that most of the time, there's a lower number. We didn't, at least on this spreadsheet, go through and, and give the lower numbers. But I can, I can talk through that, so if the levy passes, no reduction for district office staff. Library para would be reduced on both scenarios. Administrative adjustments with the summary assignments would be like a fifty-five and not zero if the levy passes. Secretaries, um, and five OA or office assistants. So the secretaries have their own, um, duties, the office assistants have theirs, we would try to balance out the staffing, it's at the buildings, there are some differences right now with, with, uh, with, with the buildings as far as number of secretaries and office assistants.
I have a couple of questions, Craig, I don't want to stop here.
No, go ahead.
On the, okay, so let's go back to the library, did we decide that one position would be cut and then, but with each school was still that some part of a para, they rotate, okay? And then, with consultants, we certainly spend more than ten thousand dollars total a year on consultants, and then we discuss this later down the spreadsheet.
Wait, are you talking about my budget?
Not deciding your budget, but.
Oh, okay.
District Y, okay, okay. Well, we see that later.
That's reflected in both the end of my budget, so. Some of it's taken out of DEA, some of it's taken out of Title III.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you add those together, um, it's right around, it gets right around where we're at with, with different consultants. Different pricing, so.
Sorry. So we're at the elementary counselor. Would not be reduced under, let me say a scenario two, instead of repeating all the time. Each are assistant. That's, um, health, health room. Human resources, that's health room assistant, so. DEA heights, um, heights has basic yet, these are, so the thought process, there's, these are basic yet funding, right? For levy, you know, if the levy fails, then we're trying to look at all the basic yet pots of dollars. And so, our, our plan would be to reduce, uh, pair educators, it's paid out of basic yet at heights.
Most of our pair educators do not pay out of basic yet, but they got, but sometimes a little basic yet for like recess supervision and stuff like that.
Did we bring back all the parents after they were laid off after the, for a weekend?
The health room assistant, with COVID, we hired an additional help for the nurses, and that's been paid out of COVID. And that's your money. Our thought is to remain with that still funding. There is Esther three, which is being the budget for next year, we're spending S, we've already spent Esther one, we're now spending Esther two. So we would budget, um, that position and pay that at best. Again, that's, that's an issue as far as sustainability. Certainly, once Esther three went away, we would not have that funding, so that would be a, that's kind of just a temporary fix in our minds. The teachers, so first thought was six teachers, two from heights, two from the middle school, high school, and then music. This morning, and we, our thought is to reduce five, but to keep the music. But, uh, I don't know if you want to specifically talk about what those positions would be?
Well, I, I think that, um, right now, we have enough resignations, and with some reassignments, we would be, wouldn't have, in this scenario, um, with this many teachers, we could handle that with reassignments. So this would not be cutting people who are above what we are or retired.
So therefore, no reduction force.
We have people. If we stay in this configuration. We've had, um, quite a few, we've not quite a few, we've had six, six, I think, or maybe seven resignations. Some of those, though, maybe eight, some of those are like speech and some of those areas that we have to fill. So, if, there are positions we have, we're gonna have to fill because we have to provide the services. We've had some elementary teachers and some, one, I suppose, had handful resignation position, it's, the numbers are pretty low this year.
So athletics, of course, without the levy, we would, that eight hundred and eight thousand is cutting all sports. Extra curricular, anything like that. With the levy paying most of that, we would still plan for, you know, how many reductions in that, that teams.
I think we better follow up with that, that even when you say cut sports, everyone thinks, okay, there's gonna be no sports at all. That count it, it would, they'd be available through private.
Other, other means.
I just wanna make sure.
Just funded from the schools.
So what would be cutting the one hundred eighty-eight thousand?
Um, there's a number of different things we could look at, but, um, one of them would probably be administrative fees.
The building subs, right now, we, we have, each building has a specific sub that's been subbing for the entire year. That's kind of been a pilot program, so to speak, we feel that, that we would not do that next year. The issue with that is that the sub works six hundred and thirty hours, and we have to cover the medical insurance. And these subs are paid at a higher rate than a daily sub.
We'd have to negotiate.
So that would be.
So it's contractual language, we'd have to get a memo.
It's a, yeah.
Six hundred and thirty, we're good.
Yeah, it's.
Please do a master's interview question.
Um, because we pay the higher rate, they don't have benefits then because they're under the hours.
No, they get the benefits, and any sub that gets to the six hundred and thirty hours gets benefits from that, why not? But they, knowing they're technically, like on the salary agreement, so they would have it from the beginning, plus then the higher rate, so.
Are they certified like a regular teacher?
They have substitute certificates at a minimum, so, uh, just depends, some of them are regular. Some of the regular teachers, they get choose to sub. But it's, I think it's met with mixed success at the buildings. They don't have the ability to use them effectively, so.
The idea behind it was to create a pipeline, and a lot of times when we have subs, they're subbed out at per day rate. And so, a veteran teacher, at the highest level of pay scale is, yeah, a hundred dollars or eighty dollars per class period, something like this. So, uh, of course, we can use these subs all day. Now, now, can we negotiate proper language in there? They do get a duty free lunch, but I think they can work out about where's a teacher has a practice.
The six hundred and thirty is three and a half hours for a hundred.
Is there a well without that? No, if it was just a long term.
We're working ninety days.
It's crazy.
Seven, there you go.
It was just a record, some of it's broad and long-term basis, so lower rate of pay with them.
They're actually on the long term, they're coming in long term of the cover, cover at
Yeah, they're in a position that we know they're gonna exceed that inward. Okay. So that's the building subs, the security guards is the next column, we have five. This scenario, there would be three, there would be two that would not be. Get some conversation on that. Textbook adoption, we have a hundred thousand dollars in the budget right now. That would be main. School board, um, school board doesn't have a lot, there's some money for salaries, there's some travel in there. We would, you know, realistically, I, I think in my budget, there's like five thousand worth of salaries, the board. Probably can do some of that. But, the audit, the dues for LSA, those are all in the board's, in the board's budget, possibly.
Forced to do members of LSA, correct?
I'm not sure, Matt.
Do we pay, is this the model policy, or is this different?
It's different, this is, this is the board's, I mean, that's part of it, this is the board to be a member of LSA, so we can have access to that.
I'm not saying it's a bad thing.
Right, sorry. That's expensive.
Now, if, uh, if you set aside, for instance, you have seventy-five hundred down for for member compensation, and it does not use actual rules, that is your backend, correct?
Great cost is thing, but, you know, so, maintenance and grounds, um, reducing some staffing time there, so this, this, uh, ninety-nine thousand one the average cost of one grounds person, and off, and some office support, but if it works in that, in scenario, it would be, it's reducing some office support.
Studiants, three, two under the levy did pass. And that's, you know, that's another issue, I mean, getting buildings, uh, we will be moving the students from Woodstrand to the old high school. So this might just be, you know, temporary.
So I'm not a huge fan of, of temporary employees, so to speak. But we reduce, reduce studiants and ground sweepers. That be a cost effectively, I mean, we've got more grass on our mountain. So, to, to, uh, to let some ground sweepers go. Would temp help, uh, be more cost effective for something like that? I, I, I understand we hire a couple summertime in Monmouth.
We only have one. Well, most of them went up to two, but we don't have one, but we did discuss in our meeting, um, that last week, when we said, and Jason, that Craig and I about the torn options person contract, it's less expensive with a business. It's a bigger challenge than that. There's some ideas we've had around. That's what we've talked about. Staff to chat.
When it comes down to push versus shove, this is resource allocation choices, right? That's what this is all about. So if we didn't do that, then something else we need to, to make the math work.
If the contract was a company to take care of the moment that, then we're not paying the benefits, so.
Maybe some union conversation, of course, but. Again, these, you know, these, these are not easy.
No.
Discussions, choices. These are our thoughts. So the next one is Canvas. It's Canvas.
Canvas is a firm that, you know, learning platform to with students, you know, first, it works to students online, information, and they can submit it online. But we have Teams, um, and it's free, and Canvas isn't. Um, we also actually have access to Google, but we actually use Google. That's also free, so it makes sense to go to something that's free and Teams is working, uh, Microsoft is working on Teams being able to, Teams in the office suite being able to do the same things that Canvas does as far as, I know there's some features with grading and things on that that like to use, some, some teachers like to use, so.
The next, um, one is kind of a conglomerate of different activities, Camp Wooton, Zula Children's Theater, Summer School, some PDIS, which is an incentive, avid load and allocation. The, the summer school, a budget out of basic yet is, was forty-six thousand dollars. So, that would be an easy one. Esther can pay for that, it's, yeah, and my bit can pay for some too. Those are, you know, specific for those students, but this is what's been paid, it was budgeted out of basic education for for the, for the summer school. I'm not gonna get into Camp Wooton right now, and that's the conversation for another day, but the past couple of years with COVID, we haven't taken fifth graders to camp.
Was it eliminated before COVID or just get back to college?
The, the next one about contracts, that's copiers, we have some extra copiers that we think we could get rid of and maybe reduce, reduce our copy of the contract. Special Ed is another, Special Ed and food service. Even though they're, they're not basic education dollars. Their programs are. Not self sufficient. So their, the only source of funding that they're over is, is the general fund, excuse me. Fund balance, so our proposal is to. Make some deductions in Special Ed if we can, that's a tricky one too. There's many students with VIPs, there's maintenance effort rules that we have to maintain. Whatever the per people spending was for one year, we have to maintain that for the next year. But we do feel we have some areas that. That we can make some deductions there. And office support.
Craig, could you explain to anybody who might not be hit to how it works, that if they have. Say up to five or six percent spend in a given population, the state pays for it, we want you to be on that.
Yeah, it's thirteen point seven percent of our enrollment, so we're not at there right now. But if we exceed that, then the state won't fund from that percentage, that's a good bet.
Of course, are we?
Uh, I'd have to.
I know we've been over the past.
Our enrollment has gone down a little bit, and again, it's a, it's a formula of what the district wide enrollment is, so. You'll probably get closer since our district wide enrollment is, is dropping too. Food service, that's a, that's a pretty difficult one. Cost of food, because everything is, is rising, as we know. We're looking seriously at doing the community eligibility provision. C and P, which everybody would, would eat for free, we've had the last two years, but. Without the C and P provision, uh, we go back to the regular model of, you know, full pay. Free reduced lunches. So we're, we're looking at that and we'll do an analysis financially to see. If that's gonna be, you know, how big of a hit that would be, I don't think we'll make any money on that provision, but. We want to try and be as efficient as we can. Darlene is, is not real happy with me saying, we'd really like to consider with it, you know, making some personnel cuts, but. Maybe that's what we're gonna try to do. Fred retrieval. Again, forty thousand, we. Pay for that with grants, twenty thousand with the levy passes, you might want to just make that all forty thousand. Pay for it with, with the learning assistance program.
We back up the transportation, it's going all the way across. That we have to throw in the other bus, no pun intended.
Unintended.
Why is there nothing there that can be?
That's. Again, it's, the one thing that we could do, right now, the state does not fund if there's transportation within a mile of the schools. Issues with that, I think we're gonna have next, uh. Next Wednesday, Amy's gonna come and talk about transportation and the buses and those kind of things, but. But there's some conversation we still need to have about that.
Uh, the, the one that, one in one mile bus route and.
I wouldn't say the line, I mean, doing that.
Everything else is on that transportation.
I'm not saying that they don't overspend, in years past, they've overspent. But last year, the state had one time. Influx of transportation money, so we bought some new things and did spend on personnel.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's two, so money could go into.
Also, even if this is the yearly, it's already.
They go over, we have to pay for them. So it's restricted, isn't it?
Hair it over for transportation?
I think they have some.
So even if we did come up with some, some savings that could get up to next year.
It's its own, it's its own, it's like, like I calculated stuff on depreciation of the buses.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt you, Craig.
Nope, no problem, the last one is kind of a catchall staffing budget, so. Buildings are not gonna be happy, but continually have reduced their building budgets. So there's some. Some items in there. We feel that we could. Reduce overtime, that's been being charged. And these are, these are hog trains, it's not like people are just working overtime because. They want to, you know, so that's, that's always a kind of a. You know, okay, no more overtime, how are they gonna get their job done? Again, there are some parameters we could put on that, building, you know, mission, authority, authorization, those kind of things, but. We also had, I think we had some additional. See, those are just the two things that I show on this sort of sheet.
I saw you mentioned overtime.
The one point five was administrated in nature. Do some other days. Student in, reduce the other five more teachers. That was included in the one point five, so that was a, another massive. Cut, uh, just so that we can balance to the four point eight.
Right, so if the levy, this additional part, so we've done that a right part, if we, if, if the levy were to not pass and we had to. At this point anyway, cut those additional five teachers, then we would have to do that. Because we have to credit the school. And, uh, and the red, and so, but five is, would be accounted for on that four point eight.
So contractually. If the board does declare a financial emergency, then with the teachers' union, we have to riff at least four if we were going to riff. If you riff one, you'd have to do at least four. So that's the gloomy picture for us. The confidence, levy's gonna pass. Still aren't out of the woods financially, mostly because of the enormous. The state has kicked in some more dollars. Um, for counselors and some other little pieces. In my humble opinion, it's not enough dollars to. Hire a new counselor. We would just use it to backfill some of this shortfall. But just thirty seconds on the budget, the budget is a proposal, it's a, it's a big jigsaw puzzle. It is meant though to be financially our policies, right, what we're, what our focus is on spending dollars. Enrollment's an estimate. Like I said, we've been pretty conservative in the past. But as you see in, in what I've been presenting each month, we're only like eleven ahead, that was through the month of, of April. As far as FTEs to the actual budget, so. We're continuing to see the decline of students, so. That's, that's kind of where we are, I mean, we won't really know, the state just recently. Gave us their software. From the revenue side and the expenditure side, so. You know, it's a pretty big process of going through and getting the staff and. And all revenues, so it's, it's a pretty big process, so. Well, we have to handle on, you know, what's, what it looks like right now, except. When we definitely have fifty kids, that's, that's, you know, four hundred thousand dollars. And I'll also say one last thing is, in the past, I don't remember. In my years here, at least on paper, having a balanced budget. The fund balance has gone up and down throughout the years. And mostly what's attributable to that, not having a balanced budget, is that we have taken out one to one and a half percent of. We want, above what I'm actually projecting, so on paper. That's, that's what we definitely showed up on paper. But we try to staff at, at that. Funding level of, of.
Any questions?
Some questions that Matt, Deanna can answer for you? You wanna?
Cause you're done, huh?
You wanna do, so, um, on this sheet. Oh, you did, man. Yeah, so, so here's another, uh, another sheet of paper. So there, there are other options in the. Far right column. And so those other options include. If, if the levy does pass, uh, things that we can cut to get to, it's configured differently, things that we can cut to get to like one point seven. And so, uh. Some of that includes, you know, like we talked about consulting. Right, uh, we'd have to go back to the drawing board and think about really what professional development would look like. For some of our teachers and administrators. We talked about just different, you know, kind of, uh, different priorities, curriculum would be put on hold. Uh, there's a hundred thousand dollars there. So the, the idea about, you know, there's some wiggle room there. If, if it does pass, and so we'll be able to kind of configure that around. Or stretch that around the boards, some of the board's priorities are what they think. Is most important, so we, we've tried to protect people as much as we could. Um, and this, obviously, when you're up against, you know, like five million dollars worth of cuts, there's only. Only so many things that you can protect, and so have to disfunction. So, uh, in looking at that, kind of, is a discussion. If there are priorities. You can either express them tonight, or if you want to think about it, um, and you can set up a time with. Craig, Deanna, or myself, or email us, or call us on the phone about, like, these are what I want to see. Protected and reflected in, in our next meeting on Monday, we'll work hard to, you know, move money around and. Bring that back to you. So. Jason, anything you wanna say?
No, not, not right now, I wanna digest this a little bit.
But thank you.
I was like, this wasn't the work packet, this is, sorry.
No.
Is it possible to start people that are following along online, if we can publish it on social media or the website, so they can access it later?
Definitely can, yeah, that was a work product today with us and, uh, basically our labor partners. And so walking through that process with them about, and that's where it came up about like substitutes. It is a, that was a contractual move that we made, we thought it was innovative, we created a teacher pipeline for us. And we could retain a lot of these people who wanted to stay and work within our community. But there are some of those cuts, obviously, that basically would go against contract, we each had to negotiate through. Um, so that was a work product today that Deanna, Craig and I did, um, with PEA. Just kind of spitballing it and looking at different ideas about where the cuts could come from. Yeah, we, we can publish that along with the work packet tomorrow.
Thank you.
Now, I would like to tend on, and this will.
Yeah, we're open tomorrow, if you wanna drop by, just text me and let me know, so.
Yeah, we, I'm, I'm sure we all have things that we prioritize.
One of the other, you know, like I said, we, we had the opportunity to meet with a couple of members last week. And the context of that conversation was that, uh. There, there were things that we could, there are different funding sources for different things, like the, say like arts, so like. Missoula Children's Theater, there, there might be community organizations who might want to sponsor that, and then the idea that. To reduce some programs, but maybe not eliminate programs altogether, and so. That was kind of some of the, some of the ideas that came out of it, and then. Well, oh, when the board's ready, we'll, we'll talk about other conversations. As well.
I think Jason and I spent three or maybe a little bit over three hours with Matt, Deanna and Craig, and it was before even the levy results were published on Thursday, so it was certainly. You know, dire while we were having these conversations, but I also think. You know, there was a good exercise in that we did identify areas that are not necessarily. You know, they're duplicate that we don't need, that we can cut them in an effort to be more financially conservative, so I think it was a good exercise in that way, maybe something we need to look at annually, like, you know. Where can we trim any fat, if there's any, or get rid of dead weight, and I think that that was important to identify those issues.
Yeah, yeah, as well as sustainability, uh, that's kind of a conversation with the board before. About ongoing staffing ops and things like that, that are repeat yearly or they get more expensive.
Yeah, I know the discussions around the levy potentially feeling more rough. Also forced us to take a good look at ourselves and help things operate, so I, I'm not necessarily gonna say it's a bad thing. Anything else? All right, guys, moving on, the next thing was, you see immediate actions, you know, I read it as immediate, but. Not so much.
Yeah, so, um, this is just a brainstorm list of things that we could. Start cutting or moves that we could make. To, just to help buffer the impact. In the back half, or the back part of this year, and so to try and save money and then take immediate action to. Uh, maybe gain some revenue, uh, gain some revenue in some different areas, so I'll talk through them really briefly. So we talked a little bit about freezing curriculum adoptions, uh, so we wouldn't really adopt anything. This year and even started going into next year, we would freeze those, we'd limit the amount of summer work that we're paying for. Cancel our consult, uh, cancel our consultancies, a lot of those contracts were written in such a way. That the district did have control, and it set up to a certain amount of days, so, um, to cancel those contracts. We talked about, uh, just different, uh, and this came up, and it came up here, temp work. Are ways that we could, uh, review, renegotiate, and if, and if we couldn't, uh, to recruit or hire. In different positions, so reduce building budgets, freeze hiring, uh, if we could, of course, you know, Craig. Has announced that he's gonna retire, so we'll need to hire for that position, business manager. But by and large, freeze retiring or freeze hiring. So that we know who we're hiring. Uh, restrict or limit overtime, uh, limit offerings for summer school, we talked about a procurement card. How often times you can get rebates, and so we've been talking about that for a number of years. We talked about letting Patterson know that, uh. We would be charging a fee, uh, next year, um, if that's a direction the board wants to go in. Donations, we've restricted donations, and so there are a lot of wire rates. Uh, in industries within our area that would like to donate money, but we've restricted that, so. To remove those restrictions and open up donations from anybody. Vehicle use, limit that for some of our workers who take their vehicles home, so we're not paying diesel on that. Uh, leverage any grant money or M SOCs, which is material supplies operating costs. Um, so we buy, be buying school supplies and things that we use, and so that end of the year with a grant, we have to try and rewrite the grants and. Try and use those funds to buy copy paper, anything else that we would need next year, dry rig smart. So look at contract services with community partners, we talked about Prosser Memorial Hospital, possibly with their P T O T positions or even nurses. Um, to look at that, creating a foundation, um, or asking booster clubs to contribute. And kind of, uh, some pay to play efforts, um, efficiency upgrades within the buildings. Meaning, you know, letting it stay a little bit warmer in the summer and turning down the, the boiler temperatures. Volunteers grants, uh, AmeriCorps, student aides, assistants, anybody who wanted to volunteer, to allow them, uh, to. And then, of course, we talked about impact, uh, impact fees for all this new housing. And then, of course, we talked about impact, uh, impact fees, uh, for all this new housing that's going in. And so those were kind of some of the, the immediate moves that we could take. Almost as soon, I mean, there, there are caveats here, I don't think P cards we could start tomorrow, we need a resolution from the board to do that. Um, Patterson, we could, you know, retroactively charge him, but next year we could. So we couldn't, we couldn't start immediately on some of them, but a lot of them we could, um, start immediately on, and so that would allow us at least a, um, two months worth of, um, two months worth of savings before we got to re-budget. So, and if we had to rip, it would be an immediate move to save money, even though we're notifying people, so, kind of the thought process behind that.
Any questions, comments? I had this thing on the list.
Is this something, is this something that, uh, do you want me to hold on this, or?
Some that's maybe.
On these, yeah, okay.
I think this, this Jason, I do think that some of these we should implement now. Or even start working on this entire list, um, you know, starting as soon as we can. Uh, primarily just to make sure that, you know, we do have some extra funds going into next year. Um, and try to save as much as we can at the tail end of this year.
Jason, are you okay with holding on this until Monday?
I don't, I don't think it's gonna change.
Yeah, there's still a bunch of them we're gonna have to tackle.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, we can wait till Monday, but I do think, you know, part of this, you know, the, the previous lists that we looked at are all things that are gonna have to be considered for next year, and this is one thing we can do now, whether it passes or fails, that, that will help, um, keep some of the funds, you know, reduce some of our expenses. But yeah, I can wait till Monday, but I do think it's something we should consider.
Why don't we as a group then jot down your notes and your thoughts on this list and kind of categorize what you think is top to bottom, and then when we meet Monday, we can sort of compare lists and, you know, maybe there's a half dozen or whatever solid right off the top that we all agree on, and then there's no, or very little discussion. And then we go from there. Next on the list, uh, would be the resolution zero five dash two two.
Yeah, so this is a, basically a resolution draft, a draft resolution declaring a, uh, financial or economic emergency. And so that, it might be beneficial for the board to consider this, if, if it doesn't pass, and also if it does pass. So anytime we're looking at, um, budget cuts and reductions, it basically lets the community know that, that we're taking a stance that, um, maybe, you know, the budgeting is our priority, I know that one of the things that boards are responsible for is signing off on that budget, um, and so that's a big, that's a big weight on the board, so. Um, just to, just to allow people to know that, yeah, we are considering this, um, as a, as an emergency or something that needs to be dealt with immediately. So.
And either way, we're gonna have cuts.
Either way, we're gonna, if, if we wanna balance a budget, then we're gonna have cuts.
Right, great.
If the levy did not pass, we would need to add a senior.
Yeah.
This only deals with.
If it does.
If it does with the reduction.
This is optimistic.
Right.
Resolution.
They decide Thursday after we got the results.
And then, so, uh, are there any questions about that?
We're saying the need set on this, no, again, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, but it'd be beneficial, even if it does pass, to, uh, it's the same thing that we did with, um, COVID, the, the vaccinations and stuff like that, the board passed resolutions or declarations saying that this is, basically, this is the state of the union, or this is the state of the district, um, and be that as it is, we'll operate accordingly.
Will this, will this be, will we be able to pass this on Monday at the board, at a special board meeting? We have to wait until the, the regular meeting on Wednesday?
Yeah, especially usually, if it's a special board meeting, usually there isn't action to be taken, uh. But, yeah.
I think you can take action at a special meeting, it's the agenda.
Yeah, action to be taken, yeah.
So, either way, we can, we could be prepared to pass, um, something on Monday. Okay, all right.
There's only one appeal that I'm gonna make, and I, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever we have to do. If the levy passes, I have two groups. Right now, middle school, science and the arts that worked for three years through the pandemic to get to an adoption. And, uh, they aren't gonna be significantly expensive, and I have money in this year's budget. I would like to at least finish with those two groups, so that they can move forward. Middle school really doesn't have, it doesn't have a science curriculum, and the arts, it's more, it's not really as much of adopting a curriculum as implementing and bolstering some of their programs, doing some replacement, getting some new music, some of those kinds of things, so. Just something to consider, if the levy passes, they've been waiting a long time.
My statement was based on a procedural question, that you can't take action at a special meeting? I don't know that we have to do this on Monday versus on Wednesday.
Yeah.
No, if, if we know that it's, if you know that it's coming and we know that it's coming, that's the only, I, I guess that's the only piece there that we're, we have to notify employees by the fifteenth, or that's what we're shooting for our target date, which is actually the thirteenth. So if, uh, based upon what happens on Friday, we'll have a really good understanding about what will take place. And then it will just be walking through those steps, um, so it doesn't have to happen Monday, as long as we know where we're headed.
Okay, so the wording will stay the same, I don't know what changed, but it's on Monday.
If it, if it does not pass, it will change. So, if, if it does not pass, a lot of things will change.
What's your estimated cost this year?
Um, well, science is gonna depend on, which they're piloting to right now, but, um, uh, I can do, I can do it probably for less than the money I have right now. I have a hundred, almost a whole hundred thousand that I was touching at this year. I don't think the arts, uh, the biggest expense comes from music because they need some upgrades and listeners, just instruments of that. I can deal with what I have, it's probably significantly less than what.
Hey, Deanna, can we get a propo, a proposal of both of those curriculums and costs at the Monday meeting?
We will when we're all the way done, we're not quite there, the pilot's still happening at the middle school. And arts working out, we're working on arts right now, so that one will be done in the next couple of weeks.
So when, when will you have that information?
Before the end of May.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on this? So I guess, uh, put your thoughts together on the immediate action now list, uh, this will come back to us Wednesday at the regular meetings.
It was a policy one, it's the last.
Yeah, yeah, and then next we're gonna talk about policy twenty four ten.
So this is on there because, um, uh, in Prosser School District, we require students to take twenty six credits. And so the, uh, Washington State only requires twenty four. Uh, so we're a couple of credits ahead of what the state requires. Now there, the state has a, since MacClary, they've developed this parrot typical school model, that school model is based on X number of kids with X number of teachers, um, taking X number of credits. And so we are going to, uh, try and budget more conservatively and even balance the budget. Uh, we probably need to look at, uh, the number of credits and classes that are required for a student to graduate, and look to reduce it, so in reducing this, it would also allow us to, um, at the high school level, bump some teachers to middle, the middle level, and take some middle school teachers and maybe bump them to the elementary level. Uh, so when we look at this type of a structural change, um, this is standing in the way, or this, this drives some of the staffing at the high school. And so we would reduce that, which would reduce the need for some of our teachers, and so we would, uh, look at involuntary transfers on this, um, so this is something that we wanted the board to look over, uh, because if, if it didn't pass, this would be a solid recommendation to change it to twenty four, and, um, give us a little bit of freedom to reconfigure the staff. But, so the further we get, the more credits that we require, the, the further away from this parrot typical school model, um, that we get, and the more money it requires to staff. So Craig or Deanna, anything to add on that?
So, yeah, I would just say that when the high school was reviewing this several years ago, when that, when the twenty, part twenty four came along, that time, we required twenty three credits for graduation, which actually was quite a bit more than, um, was more than most districts require. Um, so we really just needed to add one credit, while the reality, at least, was the principal, the principal of the time, or the leadership of the time made the decision, um, they are, they moved into this trimester schedule, kids have thirty one opportunities to earn twenty six credits. And then they also have this, the different social studies requirement that is not the requirement to the state, and it's not what most districts have. Social studies is a three-credit requirement, not a three and a half credit requirement, and so in the end, they made the decision to go to twenty six credits, so technically on the schedule for class of two, seven thousand seventeen beyond, there's an extra half credit of so, social studies and an extra credit and half of the lectures that the high school requires, so those would be the reductions if they move to the twenty four credit model.
So when, when we talk about that, I think that one of the reasons why it was done is that, um, the, no, more credits may mean that you have to work harder to graduate. I think really Deanna's working on redefining that by having a more rigorous master schedule. And so we're putting more difficult classes within our master schedule, with it, with college in the classroom, the more AP classes, and we're pushing, pushing students to take those, and so instead of requiring more credits and saying that that's, that's where the rigor comes from, is more work, we're saying, it's actually harder work. You know, we can put the statement twenty four credits, we can focus on, um, you know, are students taking more difficult classes? Um, and even more intervention, uh, type of classes, or they'll have more opportunities for that, um, if they have them in their schedule, so. Just something that, um, this was one of those structural pieces that, this is how our districts govern, but if we were going through those cuts, we'd seriously have to consider it, and we may wanna consider it anyways.
And, and Brian, I was just here, that Brian actually is updating this policy because, you know, we went through all those years where almost every year of students was a different requirement, that's kind of what this policy reflects, there actually used to be more differences on it. So now we're in the twenty one and beyond, and it follows those credit requirements, but if any changes are gonna be made, this has to be updated anyway, this is the time, this would be a good time to do it.
Does band still count as a foreign language?
Band?
Yeah, it used to be.
No, that, that counts as art.
Well, no, it did, really, at one point in time, band counted as a foreign language, cause you had.
Not, not, well, I've been here.
Well, they did when my kids.
That's some creative, that's creative, um, scheduling. No, they, uh, uh, foreign, uh, no, just world languages.
Well, they, and, uh, American sign language, you can do.
We don't all have that.
Yeah, we don't know.
It, it kind of, it sometimes it was in the same, when, when my kids were in band, I swear, it was considered a.
So band would fall under arts, and then most kids that are in band get enough arts credits because they're in it for four years, so then they end up with a lot of credit.
Any questions on this, guys?
Yeah, so knowing that, uh, processing takes time, and after you look at it, feel free to reach out to any of us, we'll be in the office this week. And, uh, you can call meeting with any of us, and we'll ship our schedule to meet with kids, so, um, yeah. Uh, we're committed to have a, a work product that you're satisfied with by our next Monday meeting, uh, so.
I will not be in the district on Thursday, I'm going with the counselors. There's, there's new laws around counseling and new guidelines that we're expected to follow. So we're going to the ESD to work on our district counseling, building and district counseling plans, I'm gonna go with that, so I won't be on Thursday. Sorry, Craig, well, Craig's not sorry.
I'll be on an airplane next Monday.
Something's warm, I don't.
It's warm.
Supposed to be like seventy-five Wednesday. All right, guys, if there's no other comments or questions concerning these last three items, we're gonna jump into talking about future meetings, there was gonna be one Wednesday the fourth, which we're gonna cancel. Gonna bump that out to Monday, the, gonna be the ninth, is that right?
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, same time, same place, and then our next regular board meeting's on the eleventh downstairs. The following Wednesday, we're gonna have another study session right here, and then, of course, the following Wednesday, there's another regular board meeting downstairs. So if there's nothing else.
Ninth is here.
Yeah. Meeting adjourned.